All right, well, I have seven to talk, so if anyone would please drive for the President's Agents, I will call the meeting forward. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Great. The first item on the agenda this evening is the adoption of the agenda. On the things on the agenda this evening, I do believe it is more of a work session than a regularly scheduled meeting with public hearings. Makes me wonder if we should hear public comment first and then have our presentation and then work through our old business. If that would be agreeable to the commission, I'll go ahead and make that motion myself.
Okay.
And also, thank you, Ms. Ritter. Any further conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to the public comment portion of the meeting. You're all welcome to comment at this time and address your comments to the commissioners. Please, we do ask that you use the microphone and state your name and the district in which you reside, so that we can have your comments for the record. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think if you went to the spot to the problem to attend that you probably had something you were interested in, and I wanted to make sure we addressed that for you.
Right. My name is Kelly Bennett, and I'm from the Stonewall District. And received a letter in the mail about one of our neighbors who is, who I thought was going to be here tonight. And it was a zoning issue about wanting to put another house on a property. And I was very interested in that because I had tried that years ago. I have 50 acres in Castleton and was denied. So I was very curious about what, how that all worked. And so I came up here thinking she was going to be here, and there was actually a discussion about that.
Okay, I think I know the answer to that question. But I'm going to defer to our zoning administrator, Michelle Summers, so she can answer that for you expediently.
So she, Mrs. Thompson, was supposed to be on the agenda for tonight, but she requested that she be taken off the agenda. She was unsure if she was gonna do a new build or remodel. She was still unsure of her plans.
Okay.
So.
So to be determined?
Yes.
Okay. All right, fair enough. And when something like that happens, do we, do we alert the neighbors when it's placed back on the agenda, or?
If, when it's placed back on the agenda, I will notify the neighbors.
Okay, I really appreciate it.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thanks. Happy to help. We can go. I'm glad I didn't ask you all of a sudden through the whole meeting. Have a good night. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Karen Hutt, Jackson District. So I'm speaking to the Transient Ordinance, Ordinance, Ordinance Posits. So regarding the language referencing screening, I would just say that this language is in our ordinance for a reason. It's an added measure to address concerns and protect the public and neighbors. Retaining the existing language referencing screening requirements is a clear signal of that expectation to applicants, staff, review bodies, and the public. If there is a concern that raising, that retaining our current language might somehow be misinterpreted as implying that impacts from other accessory uses and the principal lodging structures are somehow exempted from screening requirements, this could be addressed by the addition of a sentence that says something like additional screening and additional screening, buffering, and landscaping requirements to address other adverse impacts may be required in accordance with 170-52A. For tent campgrounds, our current ordinance limits occupancy to two weeks, and I was just wondering what the rationale is for extending that to 30 days? And is there a reason that we are removing the minimum 3,000 square foot requirement for each campsite? For tent campgrounds, our ordinance currently has a requirement that the facility shall have direct access by means of a travelway 20 feet in width to a road currently maintained by the state. The proposed language would instead allow this type of use to also be on private or public roads that just meet type 2 road standards. Given that a type 2 road has a 12-foot minimum width and a 2-foot minimum shoulder requirement, do we want to allow this type of commercial activity on private roads, particularly shared roads? How does this protect other residents on those roads with shared maintenance agreements? Shouldn't we keep the current requirement that these uses have direct access to state-maintained roads to better protect those owners and residents on private shared roads? Again, our current 20-foot width on a public-maintained road and a minimum payment requirement, those are protections for people on shared roads. Whether private or state-maintained, these uses could potentially add significant maintenance impacts and safety considerations on our roads. We have a lot of smaller roads that can be windy with line of sight and topographical challenges for standard vehicle traffic that they serve now. Safety concerns from increased traffic from standard cars and trucks on gravel roads is a topic that often comes up at public hearings. I've heard members of our emergency services community talk about safety and response considerations with regard to narrow gravel roads. Campfires and outdoor cooking is common with camping in RV parks. We have many private roads that have shared rideways without formal maintenance agreements, and they operate on the neighbor handshake policy. I'm concerned about creating a situation where we kind of pit a neighborhood and fracture it with a use that comes in, and I just, I would ask the planning commission to carefully consider the implications of changing and lessening the road requirement protections here, particularly with regard to campgrounds and to retain the screening language, that that's an important protection to the public. We need to ensure that we strengthen our ordinances and keep protective language. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? I should note for the record, Mr. Schulein has joined us, and he was a little.
I have a note.
Deo snacks, we're worried about you.
I sent him texts. Did anybody get that?
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at this time? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. That takes us to the first item on the agenda, the presenting ordinance amendment, Contractors' Yard Language, which we're getting back from the board supervisors. Oh, I'm so sorry. We're gonna, I'll let Darren talk now, I apologize.
This won't be long.
This is yours.
She'd asked me for 15 minutes, and I haven't required.
Here, here's a great, here's a great second.
Thank you. And several of you, it's the first time I've met you. My name is Darren Stephen Sack, currently serves as the Emergency Services Coordinator for Rapid Hanny County, and part of that is being liaison to our fire and rescue system.
Did you get a chance to meet everybody?
No. I, I did yearly for several years.
Down to down and introduce ourselves. Did you want to start?
I'm Brian Schuh, I live in Chester, Yankton. Glad to be here. Representative Wayne.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Tom Sisk, I live in Sprayville, Representative Pete Young.
I'm Steph Ritter, I live in Flint Hill, and I represent the BZA.
Good to meet you, ma'am.
Tommy Ecken, I live in Amesville, and I represent the Jackson District.
Thank you, sir.
Jerry Lightman, I've been here for a while.
Alvin Henry, Hamilton District.
I'm Michelle Summers. I'm the one who reached out to you.
Designing Administrator.
I'm in a unique position. I, I don't see this out loud, I live in Amesville, but I live in the Culpeper side, just a mile over the line. I, I come here after 37 years of public service in Faulkner County, with your fire, fire rescue system. But I'm, I'm very pleased to be here, it's an incredible opportunity to serve, and I thank you for that. I was asked to give like a brief overview of our fire and rescue system and probably open discussion of how our system may intersect with future planning as the board looks, looks to the future, and what certain things do work that present challenges for us. And please know that I want to be a resource if you, if you've come, you know, there's a lot of agribusinesses that are turning into larger businesses and in public venues, and you know, those things, those things with, creates immediate challenges for fire rescue responses, and I look forward to working in the future to help us find some issues for those. As most of you know, our fire and rescue system is, our fire and rescue services are provided through a combination effort of seven volunteer companies and a small group or handful of people that work in career service. Typically, most of our efforts is to bolster EMS, our emergency medical services, at this time. Last year, we responded to over 139 unique EMS calls, or fire EMS calls within our system. I am proud to say we have a pretty robust fire and rescue system. That being said, we do have weaknesses. I think we have some systems in place to do dispatching to make up for some of those. Every company has their ups and downs, but by far, I think we are doing quite well. Our future challenges can be recruitment and retention. You know, we, we, we face some unique challenges in this population. We have an aging demographic that require, often require more services. Geography is often a challenge for us. We have to drive long distances to get the calls. And probably the, the one thing that was the biggest change for me is we have no local hospitals. Each one of our hospitals is about a 30-minute ride, and if we have to deal with someone who may require acuity, acuity care, you know, a heart attack, or a stroke, or a trauma victim, they probably have to go 45 minutes or be flown to a tertiary care center such as UVA, UVA in Charlottesville, Fairfax or Winchester primarily. So those are all, they've got some unique challenges to me, but I think we can do a great job of meeting those needs. I've talked about one of our challenges being recruitment and retention. We've launched a very aggressive campaign in our school system, you know, to attract students and to help them. This is vocational education. Our first and foremost goal is to help young adults make informed career choices. And secondly, it goes through our volunteer ranks, and we know that this is a cyclical problem. There are some, well, some, if we're lucky enough to get them involved, may matriculate and move off to college, move out of the area. But if we keep one or two each year, and we keep replacing that cycle with each school year, we can help build that. There are a lot of fire and rescue opportunities in the communities around us. Culpeper, Faulkner, Prince William, Loudoun, Warren County, all are hiring a lot of career responders, so if we can get people split the door, they could go to work for these neighboring jurisdictions and still be able to live locally and continue to serve the neighbors as volunteer in our system. So I remain optimistic that we can continue to make the roads in that, in that direction. But do know that, you know, we have to have this balance of increased demand for service, and we're going to have to keep a close eye on what we have to do. We may have to add future career staffers to help bolster that response, but I don't see any major changes coming in the near future. I looked at the Welton Cooper study to, they, they do a good job of anticipating growth at 10-year increments, and admittedly, they have a 30, they advertise a 36% error rate, and in a, in a sparsely populated community like this, it's probably higher. It was, there's no, we have an aging demographic in the next 10 years, they say, they say that's going to slightly decline, where our growth may grow by a few hundred over the next 20. We, our, our age median, we make a drop in terms of people over the age of 65, which could help us to succeed in terms of making their future demands here. I was given a small excerpt that you had mailed to me in preparation. There are, I guess, some revisions needed in that. Obviously, the, the one medical practice had ceased, and then the addition of career staff. I have some edits I'm happy to send in to you to help with that. And again, I'm myself available for any of your future questions or needs.
You know, I, I'm on the Flint Hill Fire Department, and I've been asked to be part of the Strategic Planning Committee. And I know this is probably not something you can answer, but it seems really crazy to me that the, that the department that gets to the accident first gets all the money. I mean, because you have all of these people responding, it's, the whole, the whole system seems to me really poorly organized.
I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about CMS, or the Center for Medicaid Services Reimbursement for ambulance transports?
Yeah, exactly.
And for those of you that aren't familiar, we, we can bill for services. We don't take any money out of citizens' pockets, but we'll obviously CMS and private insurers. And we can only bill for a transport, so if we came and spent an hour at your house helping you, if you signed to refuse, I mean, a transport, there's no bill involved. You know, when I talked earlier about we have these, we have these mechanisms in place to ensure that we're meeting our, our customers' demands, and that, some of that involves dual dispatching. So 20 years ago, they may have only dispatched a single ambulance and a single engine, but because of staffing ebbs and flows in our system, we dual dispatched, so sometimes multiple units, or sometimes, often multiple units of dispatch, and sometimes multiple units arrive on the scene. Part of it is, part of it is staffing, you know, whatever may, if they have an able-bodied staff. I mean, from, I know from my perspective, and probably most of people feel that way, an ambulance is an ambulance. I know that we've made decisions in terms of if they're going to go to Front Royal and Chester Gaps on the scene, let's send them that way because they have a closer return trip. And sometimes those decisions are based on what's left, or what are the resources that are left in the county, where we can best staff from. I'm, I'm not saying it's a perfect system, there certainly is some room for improvement, but I, I think a lot of that comes from this mechanism to make sure we're getting people there. Sometimes we're getting too many, too many people in the road.
But then my other question had to do with duplication of, I mean, each firehouse wants to have, you know, the best, you know, fire trucks.
The newest ambulances, the fanciest trucks.
And it just seems like not every single one of them needs to have huge tankers, right? I, I, is there, is there some way to coordinate?
With, with the exception of the town, you know, the actual town of Washington, there are no hybrids here. And typically, typically, a fire requires 16 people, which out here probably requires eight pieces of apparatus to come. And when a tanker comes with 2,000 gallons of water, and a pumper is capable of pumping 1,250 gallons a minute, it's a pretty short-lived experience. So they come and drop off these portable tanks, they look like swimming pools, and the next tanker pulls up and drops all their water off while that tanker's filling up. And ultimately, the gallons a minute that you flow in a fire are determined by how many gallons you can keep in that pool, and that has to do with the distance, the number of tankers that you have. So while it seems that there may be some duplication of services in times of a crisis, they're, they're probably mostly needed. I, I know the day of Armageddon that last March, those fires, most of our stations were empty. Yeah, I, I do think there's specialty pieces of equipment that we could help coordinate that. We have one specialty, special ladder truck that's, that's housed in Sprayville. It serves the entire community. But in terms of tankers, probably because of the rural landscape, it's probably best served, we have, we have tankers in each of our stations. Each of them need brush trucks. They have, you know, I came from a place that I guess called the lane of plenty sometimes, where we had multiple ambulances, multiple, we did a lot to trim. Our fleet, I think we have a, a fairly fiscally responsible fleet within, within this community. If a fire truck, if Flint Hill, for example, has a single ambulance, a single engine, and a single tanker.
Yeah.
If one of those goes out of service, even for records of maintenance for several hours or asked to leave the station, it's gone for an extended period, and there's no, there's no backup.
Does it?
Well, a lot of the stations, I, I know that, you know, they made loan equipment to other stations. I, I've seen that happen with Flint Hill's backup ambulance with the Sprayville, Sprayville's helped, you know, Amesville had a third ambulance that came and helped people, so I know they, the chiefs do do a good job of taking care of each other. This is a, I, fire rescue here is a, is an incredibly fiscally conservative bunch. I think they, they try to run a tight ship, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
This was too easy.
Any questions?
Well, I, I guess I would like you to, you started out mentioning the matter of agribusiness and large events. Could you unpack that a little bit more? I mean, are you, are you dealing with either been scary incidents, or, or things specifically that concern you about some of the things? Because I think when it comes to this board, we're really looking at land use decisions, and I know one of the things we're talking about are these kind of larger events with, where, a lot of which, as you mentioned, agribusiness, we have limited control over, but I'd be interested for you to say some more about that.
Certainly, and, and most of that is based on prior experience.
Okay.
You know, it'd be often, you'd have a farm venue, and they would turn into a wedding venue, and you know, the, the small service road that served them, when, when you have an event that people go, people come and go all during the day, it's not, it's not challenged, but when you have a, a wedding where 200 people come and 200 people leave, or 150 cars come and leave at the same time, it becomes more of a challenge, it becomes a constraint on our ability to enter and leave the property safely. And agribusiness itself often doesn't trigger those road requirements, say you have a 21-foot wide, wide road with 1 foot shoulder on, on the side so we can safely pass. So what we, in my former life, what we did often was try to work with those types of ideas to put turnarounds or areas that we could pull over and pass through if we had those type of challenges. But I'm not, I, I, I served as a fire marshal for several years, and our goal wasn't to work as an enforcement capacity, it really worked on education and understanding. So, you know, where, where we may lack the ability to regulate, we can certainly educate and work with a lot of these localities, a lot of these specific people to come to solution and expose our needs. Nobody wants to change the landscape of this rural country road that goes up at the same time. We want to ensure that in this emergency, we can get fire, emergency vehicles up there safely.
Well, and I think from our perspective, as you may have heard from the early public comments, some of the uses that we approve, we consider whether the road is suitable for it, and often that conversation revolves around proper access for emergency equipment. And, you know, it's interesting for you to, you, you mentioned 21 feet plus a foot meter side. I don't think that's common knowledge, maybe it's common knowledge by my other commissioners, but is there anything more you would say about just what are the, the roads?
No, those are primarily on DOT's, DOT standard road design. Now, that and bridges are the other challenges, small, small service bridges, the parking bridges, the cross, you know, water crossings that serve, and all of a sudden, you know, we, we come out and discover that we can't take a large piece of fire afterward this way.
And what about curves?
There are radiuses, they're within the design standard, I don't know off the top of my head, but yeah. It's called, like, the cul-de-sac has to be 90 feet, the light will have to be able to, to have an engine come to a bend and make a complete turn. Like I said, we just want to have a seat table so we can go through this with our eyes open and see what, and so everyone has a clear understanding of what we can't, we can't do with the current design, and what we can do to make it more suitable for both.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Great.
So what's the, why this piece of equipment that you have to deal with?
Well, they all operate on the, on the standard highway. So I don't know off the top of my head, I, I'm not a bold in that word as design, but they all are safely operated on the standard road.
Eight feet maybe?
Yeah.
If that matters.
With the 11-foot travelway, yeah.
Oh, that's, that's not, you're not going to have 11 feet on a rural road.
Right.
Particularly ones that have been around for a long time, but.
Yeah, it's more of a, of a weight issue.
Right.
So you, you touched on in the beginning that, you know, one doctor's office was last year. So from your experience, your opinion, based upon what you've seen in Rapid Hanny County, the population, the age, and all those demographics, what do you kind of feel for what kind of medical services development we should have here? Like, should we have a clinic, a doctor's office, emergency care? In your opinion, what, what's the correct mix of, if there is a mix?
You know, one of the most, I, I've gotten involved with the Rapid Hump, who's been working on the World Health Network, which has been really eye-opening. You know, coming here, the first thing I realized is there's no grocery store. So when you come to work for a 24-hour shift, you really have to plan ahead, and you know what you're going to make for dinner, things like that. And then I started to think about, what if I needed medication? You start to go to people's homes. I'm fortunate that I came here and I started as a paramedic for a few weeks, weighing calls, that was my original intent, so I got to go to people's homes and, and, and see the challenges of, you know, well, if we haven't, then we get to tell you to get our medication, or, you know, we can't, we can't see our local physician. And, you know, for all the years I've worked in Warren, where everything was, you know, on, on the corner, and it was our unique challenges. Lack of a pharmacy, a local pharmacy, is, is really difficult. We've met with, with our homes and the developers there, I guess, two weeks ago, they did say that they have a small grocery coming in the future, but today, they have no.
Cleventures.
Cleventures, yeah. I'm sorry.
Clear, but not red.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, like I said, a grocery store, a, a, more so pharmacy there, which serves a great need here, but they, they did not, they haven't been able to bring anyone in. You know, losing Dr. McHugh's practice, it's certainly got an impact on a lot of people here, and transportation remains a big challenge. It's one of the things that's echoed over and over on the, on the Rapid Hump work and talking about real health challenges. We experimented with expanding the community paramedicine program. We have a current grant that's gone in, a federal grant, that's working with UVA, I'm sorry, Valley Health, a partnership with Warren County and Page County and Rapid Hanny that would put a responder that's able to come to home, come to people's homes, and they got home visit. Currently, in EMS services, we only have two options. We have, if we come to your home, we either are going to take you to a hospital, or we leave you there. We don't have the option to take you to a doctor's office or make any other arrangements. In the last three or four years, this has a little off track with COVID, the Department of Health is starting to experiment in terms of alternative destinations, allows EMS providers to come there and look for other options like calling a primary care, or call a doctor that's overseeing the community paramedicine program, and possibly with a, a trained person that's there that's been able to do a comprehensive assessment and provide EKG and things like that. A physician may be comfortable writing, they're calling their prescription, and this, negate the requirement to have to go to a, a center. So those are things on the horizon. I, I do think that we have a, like, a challenge here for our population for access to services, which is compounded by, by limited transportation and no local resources. Did that answer your question, Mr. Henry?
Yes, sir.
It was a lot, I'm so, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, there's a problem, and we're trying to, we're trying to come up with solutions, and we're working with some of our neighborhood partners to, to do it in an economical way.
I, I guess this is the second time today I'm going to make this statement, but I just have to say, I also feel like we're living in an age of miracles, you know, living in a rural county, that we even have one doctor that practices medicine in the county. I mean, that's all we've ever had that I've been in the county, is one clinic operating in the county. For a while, that clinic had pharmacy also in the clinic, but that's really all we've ever had, and I consider us very fortunate to have that, as small as we are. And also, you know, the ability to get predictably medicines refilled by mail and delivered to your home, that's an amazing advancement that I know benefits so many people. I'm not saying there aren't problems, but if we had everything that Warrenton had, we wouldn't look like Rapid Hanny.
No, and all the things that make this place special, it, it's also some of the things that have created some of these challenges. Many of them have.
And really, how do you make it a lucrative opportunity to a pharmacy to, okay, well, we're only 7,000 people, and then there's these people that don't need medicine, and then there's these people that get their medicine in the mail, and then there's these people that go to town every weekend, compare less. So here's your pool of, of customers, can you make it with those people?
I was here less than two months, and I had to change, I changed all my prescriptions to Amazon.
Right.
Not to plug them, but the services have been fantastic.
Well, we appreciate it because it fills the county coffers.
Well, I showed the Walgreens, I, I showed the Walgreens, and they, they put it back in the hopper. I'll start manning my office.
Let me go.
We, we talk a lot about the roads, that always comes up, the type 2, I don't know what. But I know that each company has different apparatus. Is there generally a grade requirement? Some of those things are tremendously heavy, and I mean, depending on the grade of the road, can they, or can, other than the brush truck?
Right.
Are they prohibited from going to some of these?
Um, I, you know, you guys have a whole different grade problem out here that I'm used to dealing with, and I'm sure there's some challenges. Typically, changes in grade, the only apparatus that was affected by that in my previous life were ladder trucks, just because of their length, they couldn't make intersections that had change of grades. I can get, I can get the information. I think we'd come up with a standard to say this, this, this.
It was just, yeah, that's, you know, because I'm thinking about when the, one, when the trucks are loaded, if, if they have water, obviously, they weigh, they weigh eight, what, eight pounds a gallon.
Yeah, over eight pounds a gallon, and, and. And, and, you know, you have a tank with 3,000 gallons. That's already a commercial vehicle to begin with. I, um, most of my efforts in the Middle East since I came here has been on the effort in, in the realm of EMS. We, um, I, I think that there are probably some assumed risks when you move to a rural community that, um, you know, in terms of fire protection. If I, if it takes me 20 minutes to drive up the mountain to my home, it's going to take the fire department 20 minutes to drive up the mountain to my home. I don't necessarily think those assumed risks should correlate to EMS. I do think that no matter where you live, you should have the ability to access the best care you can from a, from an emergency medical services perspective. And that takes training and it takes equipment. And, and we've done a great job. I, you know, we put 14 new EMTs on the street last year. There's, there's a few more in queue that are waiting to get released. I mean, those are all great strides for here and I think there's, there's more to come. But immediately, as I said, most of my efforts and concentration really has been in that realm. We can, we can't replace that, you know, a, a loss of life. Or insurance, and, you know, insurance can replace other material things. But I see that these are the top one.
Could I? You mentioned air, and I happen to live close to the great fan and polo fields, which are often used for landing pads. I'm, I'm curious, are there designated areas or, or when you're in that situation, are they, you know, is, is there, is it just ad hoc or are there set?
It can be ad hoc and, you know, but primarily the fire departments, each, each local department has one or two areas that they know. And those coordinates are free to, or those coordinates are shared with the air care services. So they know, the pilots might rather go into something that they have locked into their system, they know they can come in, they know where their hazards are. We have the ability to land anywhere we need to, but quite often because of our distance here, we have the, it's just as easy to move to one of the designated areas, safer for everyone. You know, we've landed on, on 211, but the impact to local traffic and everything else is difficult. So, you know, the departments know where they can go and work easier to go.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Going back to the, to the issues of, of the doctors and, and medical, um, you know, there, there's, there's been some minor successes. You've got the mountainside therapy in the county that, you know, does, does rehab work and, and these kinds of things, therapeutic. It could, it seems that they've, they've been very successful and they got more than, they got quite a few people up there employed. You know, Valley Health was here for a while and then, you know, they, they moved out. And I'm, I'm just curious, is Rapid County has very little space, very little commercial space, very little space that somebody could come in and get. So we have some land behind the Atlantic Union Bank up here, but it's, you know, on-site well and septic, very broken terrain, not the ideal sites to do commercial buildings and parking lots and well and septic and, you know. So we really don't have any, no land area like, for example, you know, Falkir would have in the Bilton area, Warrington area, Marshall area, Plains land that is readily available, pretty easy to put a facility on. You know, it's kind of amazing that we have more veterinarians here in the county than we have doctors of people. There's an abundance of veterinarians, but we cross over, considering our population here, getting older, um, you know, it seems to me it's, it's something that we have to look at, the same way we have to look at the food situation. And that here we are, a very rich county and we're a food desert by USDA standards, which constantly begs it may.
I, I can't speak to the specific challenges, why do, why a physician, you know, why you can't get anyone to come out here. I'm sure there's, there's a business model that requires examples of patrons to, to make it successful. We did, and part of this grant, we were working with Valley Health, they, um, they are opening, or standalone, they're opening the school clinic for telehealth for seniors. That's, that's a, a really, a unique thing. I came here and learned what they were doing with, with not only students and faculty, but their families and how they're going to open it to seniors. And then the other part of the grant would be a, um, a computer bus, a bus staff, which transportation a few times a week taking to other medical centers.
How, how would we approach a situation, a part of a discussion with providers on Rapid County? What, how would that, how would that, you think would be structured in terms of communications with, uh, about Health, UVA or whoever?
So, so Rapid Home establishes World Health Network. They got a planning grant last year to help, to onboard a director and help establish a framework for what we're trying to do. They, um, they have a pretty robust group. There are representatives from both UVA and Valley Health. There's a, um, there's a, a, a young physician who I think has an interest in coming here. Most of the stakeholders in the community are present and I think that may be, I don't have the answers, but expectation to that table and maybe what happened. It is usually an incredible group of people that are really engaged. I told you me about Richie is the, um, the director of that program and obviously Joyce, things that makes you world for Rapid Home, represents Rapid Home. We're meeting Friday at 3:00 and then happy to, I talked to them about coming if they want to be up here or if they want to meet, um, if, if as a group or individually with any of you, I'm sure they would.
Do we have Rapid Home on the list? Michelle, I know we have a list of folks and we can talk about that as a commission. We actually, we could invite them to come speak to the commission.
Okay.
We can review that list a little later in the evening.
They're incredibly resourceful. I, you know, every time I turn around, where I came from a place where all the government services were provided through tax dollars and government here, the, if some volunteer coalition had his striving. And you can't beat the, the concept of neighbors want to fail neighbors.
So going back to your fire rescue presentation, you mentioned that the paid staff and the EMT side of it. And you think the fire side of it will be able to continue to develop more volunteer?
I, I think we're holding around. I think that presents a future challenge for us. We're starting to dive into, there's a study done in 2014 that really looked deeply at our responders and in discractability of the age demographics and knowing many of those folks for, for a long time. I think some of those, some of those people that were prompted in the report 10 years ago remain prompted today. It's going to, it's going to become a challenge that we have to continue to recruit on, on the fireside as well. It's, it's, that's a very labor-intensive operation. We were fortunate on the day of the wildfires that it, that it was, it was hard work. It was hard work there outside, um, you know, where, where actually come and contribute. Where we may not have had a number, the same number of, of responders that were able to contribute in that fashion had that been indoor house fire. Of course, an indoor house fire wouldn't be a small isolated event. It wouldn't require as much either. But now I, I think that we, not to make light of it, we are, that is going to be a continued challenge as well. With the exception of Spiritville, all of our communities, all of our fire rescue stations are combination. I think once people, if you're lucky enough to get people in the door and they taste the Kool-Aid, it's, the crossover to the other side of the, the other side of the engine bay is, is really quite simple. I think people come in for a variety of reasons, but they, basically they want to help their community. And then once they get involved, they want to know what they can do to more, to more help. And that's how you get people in EMT class and that's how you get EMTs in fire class. So I, I think our key needs to remain focused on, on recruitment. You know, our, our ability to incentivize, we're doing the max, I think that's allowed by the Commonwealth or the state. There's, there's a tax write-off for our local volunteers and things like that. But I think, you know, doing everything we can, it's just, I'm refishing the pond dry.
Well, I think the other, the other pool of volunteers that often gets over are the retirees to the county that move out here and want to figure out how to get involved. How do I meet people? I've moved to the country, we all live kind of far apart. Where's the sort of social hub for where I live? And a lot of people, I think, join for that reason.
No, absolutely. I, I think that, you know, more than anything, the success of the volunteers that stick around for more than a year probably started with a handshake somewhere. They didn't drive by a building and see a sign that said, "We need volunteers." They didn't read it in the paper. Somebody from their organization came up and shook their hand and said, "You know, we could really use somebody like you." Those are, those are the folks that get involved and it's static, the duration. You want to help them make informed decisions. It's a lot of work. You know, it sounds like, I'm going to sign up and, and 25 years ago, that's all you had simply to do was sign up. But now just the entry level programs, EMTs over 140 hours before you can provide, you can care on an ambulance. The fire class, the fire class was wrapping up when I first got here a few years ago and that's over 160 hours. It's easy to be able to be certified to ride on a fire truck. And then by the time you add the fundraising, the meetings, everything else that gets wrapped up into it, people that thought they could give up four hours a week are, are surprised to learn that it's, it's a much larger commitment.
Boy, any other questions or comments?
Just a comment to what you were saying, that the networking, the older, I'll say that the longevity of people that have been in there, if you, I think, and you've probably already seen this, but a lot of them started when they were teenagers.
All due with their parents.
Right, exactly right. And I think it, and you, I'm, I'm still sure you're working with that as well. But it would really be, I think it would be helpful to glean from those people what really attracted them in the beginning. Yes, but most of them, their parents were that, so they followed them. But then something also clicks with them that, that once, once they get started, what, what makes them continue to stay.
You, you, you're absolutely correct. Our high school program, last year we offered Introduction to Health Sciences, which was a, a kind of a scatter shot approach. It, all kids could be interested in, it was no age requirements. And it was, it was wildly successful. This year, first semester, we did that program. The second semester, we retreated that along with the EMR program. EMR program requires you to be 16 when you start. We're, we have, the, the school interest, I met with the principal and superintendent last month, they have more student interest than we have the capacity to be served right now, which is a great problem to begin. We have brought some experienced responders in to meet with those kids. We had a joint training session last week and we got to interact with some volunteers in our, in our system. I, I do think what you're saying is important, very, very much so. The other challenge, and this speaks to those type of people that served for so many years, a volunteer that, that started 20 years ago thinks nothing of giving up 12, 20 hours a week, they, they stop there on the way home every night from work and, and they're there on a Saturday all day for a work session. And the volunteers, often the volunteers that entered the door today feel that, I want to give this in compartmentalized time. I can give you four hours on Wednesday night and I'll do that every Wednesday night for, you know, um, from here to eternity, but that's all I have to give. So while our numbers may stay steady, the, the hours of service are probably decreasing. The, you, you, those, those folks are replaceable.
Takes a mixture, the youth, the, the middle age and elderly as well.
Oh, absolutely. One of the unique things about being in the fire services is one of the only places that we live communally with up to four generations at a time. It was really sad to watch my career where the biggest discussion keeps to be about what's going to be, what's going to be for dinner and, and what are we going to watch on TV tonight? And now you walk into a station, most modern stations stay with five people sitting in five different chairs watching whatever they want in their pocket. It's sort of a missed the old days, but anything else I can do for you folks?
Any other questions? Well, we'll look forward to seeing your suggestions for the revisions for the comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
I think it's page 67 in particular is the most relevant portion for fire rescue and it tends to be edited process. So we'll review those comments and make adjustments and we'll likely have follow-up questions for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
For spending your time with us this evening.
Thank you.
We like to watch, um, what do we like to watch? And what do we want for dinner? All right. Sorry about the false start earlier. That takes us to the founding ordinance amendment contractors yard question. This one, Mr. Cook, please.
Uh, Ms. Smith, would you?
Did you adopt your agenda in minutes? Did I miss that?
Okay, adopted the agenda, not the minutes.
I'm so sorry. I skipped over the adoption of the minutes. Could we adopt the minutes, please? And draw the motion to adopt the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Ackley. Please draw a second. July, any further discussion? All those in place, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Thank you. That takes us to the founding ordinance amendment.
Thank you. The board on a supervised public hearing on June the 3rd, back in 2024, opted not to adopt the draft in reference, the draft ordinance for contractors' yards back to the planning commission. The planning commission then refined, uh, refined the draft or suggestions back to the board. This body held its public hearing on November the 20th and voted unanimously to recommend approval to the board. Following the board public hearing on January 20th, they moved not taking the action. They had discussion and feedback from public comment and then they directed the county administrator and county attorney to make those changes with assistance with that information. So this draft has come back to the planning commission. We'll need to review it and schedule another public hearing. To hit on the highlights of what was changed, uh, one of the topics of discussion was the impact of the 250-foot minimum yard requirement and how that distance would interplay with the typical parcel acreage. This draft proposes a minimum of 10 acres with a 200-foot minimum yard requirement. The total area used for outside storage not to exceed 20,000 square feet in a building or structure not to exceed 10,000 square feet. If access to the proposed use is from a private road, the private road right of way must be 50 feet wide from the connecting public road to the safe entrance. And Mr. Fair, I believe you can take extra and then comment.
All right. If nobody has anything to add, I think we've, we've looked at this before. We signed it up to the board, the board, I think for the most part it was a simplification that was exercised in the board. Were there any, any large-scale changes that you wanted to cover with it here? Or is, is it to your mind largely is just a simplification?
I think it was mostly subtracting things. The board went, I think the conversation started out with, we want to make it really simple and just do these four things. And then by the time the end of the conversation happened, they went line by line through and said, yeah, keep that, keep that, eliminate that one, keep that one, keep that one, eliminate that one. And then add in, in addition to the road requirement under 11, uh, 11 now on 73, add, there's still the kind of subjective language. And then they added in C, which was if it's on a private road, that right of way needs to be 50 feet. So knowing that that is probably going to screen out many private roads. Not all, but many. And if somebody really, really wanted to do one of these things, they could figure out how to get that easement to 50 feet. May not, still may not be appropriate for that parcel, but that was really the only thing they added to my record.
Since, since we've already been through this once and gotten behind it, now it's just been simplified and I don't want to mean to get ahead of the commission, but if we all can live with this revision, is there an opportunity that we just do it as a joint meeting and not advertise and?
Any ordinance change can be adopted through a joint public hearing.
Okay.
That could be done on a regular planning commission day if you invite the board here or on a board meeting day if, you know, planning commission convenes at the same time. I can say the discussion at the board, although Ms. Smith knows, um, having reviewed this ordinance at public hearing twice, I expressed a little frustration like, let's not do that again if it must, you really kind of get to where you. let's not do that again if it must really kind of get to where you really think it's going to be in a position where you're ready to adopt it. And the board signaled that this is, seems to be what they wanted to do. Well, subject to hear from the public again and could influence things. So that makes sense to me, if the planning commission wanted to, probably may, just because you have the advertising.
Good.
Absolutely.
I think I may have just missed a step where we went through this, but I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, I thought we had different categories of...
We did, and that was the earlier iteration. So I think the first iteration was we should have two different, well, we had the small contracting business on the residence. We're not changing that, anything about that. And then the next one is, okay, a commercial use. They're allowed by right in the commercial district. And for a special exception, they're allowed most everywhere and no longer in conservations of the district. And earlier conversations said, well, we should have a minimal commercial one and a kind of big commercial one. And one of the things that came out of the earlier public hearings was, and I think Mr. Henry kind of spoke to this, we don't want a big commercial one here. It doesn't fit the character of the community, particularly not in an agriculture area where these special requirements are going to apply. So the only type of contractor's yard that fits Rappahannock is one that has no more than 20,000 square feet of outside storage and no more than 10,000 square feet of inside storage. And you can do that on a parcel that's at least 10 acres in size. And that's the only kind that we want here. If you get bigger than that, Rappahannock's probably not your place. You're going to have to go to another community that has industrial zone property and live there. Or if you really want to swing for the fences, you can try to resell something here into industrial.
Thank you for that recap. So we basically consolidated the requirements into, you know, restricted to the high end and then there was no reason to combine them. So this reflects the entirety of the commercial.
Yeah, and today, there are absolutely no limitations on what the, kind of the big one can be. And what this would effectively do is put a ceiling on what the big one can be.
Gary, did we include in that, I was trying to find the outdoor lighting?
I think that's part of the plan. It's the line 66 and 67, and this is an addition.
Okay.
It was upon the request of the administrator, nonadministrator, or commission. And in both places where that comes up, the board asked for that to say, "Or board supervisors." Application shall include light, noise, dust, burn, infuse, smoke, odor mitigation plans, as well as plans for... So that would fall into that.
Yeah, I have a question, and I do not know the answer to this, that's why I'm asking. A lot of the places in the county, 15, 28, wherever, some are in that line, the half is conservation and the other half is agriculture. Now, how does that play out? Have you precluded, I mean, a lot of, this is hypothetical, and I don't get into a lot of hypotheticals, 15 acres is a lot, and it's half in conservation, half in agriculture.
Yeah, and actually, if you read into the zoning ordinance, the definition of where that conservation line can be subjective based on inspecting the field. Is this supposed to be the steep or slow slope?
Yeah.
So it would not be allowed in the conservation area.
Okay.
What is not clear is, do you have to have 10 acres in agriculture?
Yeah.
The parcel here, the minimum lot size shall be 10. So I don't think we could enforce it in a way that says you have to have 10 acres of agriculture. If that was a line of the planning commission of board, then we should say that.
Okay.
Maybe we should say that.
Of course, their use would have to fit, meet the minimum yards and fit within the ag part.
Yeah.
And if they had, you know, five hundred feet in the back, then whatever. Most parcels are not neat rectangles.
No, the bigger problem is you have that, you know, that marker going through the middle of the parcel, it's so hard to know.
Yeah, which like I said, it truly is subjective in our ordinance where conservation is.
Yeah.
And our zoning maps are not at all precise even beyond that. Because we do have some, there might be split zone ag and something else.
Yeah.
So to that point, it sounds like it would be reasonable to interpret that item seven, that 20,000 square feet of usage will have to be within the area where the uses are allowed.
Ag.
Yes.
Ag.
And we've had that issue in some other sites, not come up with this, but...
What do you need to mention?
So I think this scales down and closes up the loose ends of previous ordinance where basically we had, for the larger the site, the more land you could have. And, you know, you could end it up where you could have had a very large parcel of a contractor's yard on a large piece of land. And that could be a very big use. I mean, you know, I don't know if everybody will realize this, but some years ago, a company in Washington tried to rent the landfill to store all their heavy equipment there to avoid the personal property tax on their equipment in Falky County. And you could have events like that happen and it's, you know, Northern Virginia's moving towards this direction, Falky or Compton or all this. And we have seen in Falky a very renewed interest in industrially zoned land for contractor's yards. And it's bringing big money now, big money. So, you know, if somebody has an opportunity to come out here and do what was allowed in the old ordinance, it would have been very favorable for them to buy a big piece of land, zone ag, put in contractor's yard that they needed. And it could be a big burden on that location, the roads and everything. So I think this really addresses what we need and really tightens it up. It makes a lot of sense. And it's pretty, it's thorough, but it's also, I think, simple and easy to interpret. The board supervisors did a good job of tying this down on all these loose ends here.
I would say if the planning commission has a mind to do a joint public hearing, I can't imagine that the board supervisors would welcome you at one of their evening sessions. So if you wanted to do that, then your motion could be to authorize it to move forward as a joint public hearing with the board at the board's, you know, desired date or whatever.
And did we want to look at just the square footage and acreage chart to make sure everybody has their question answered about that? In case anybody has any questions about that too. I sometimes forget that you all didn't sit through all the board of supervisors discussion. Thank you for bringing that out, Mr. Light.
Go left, so just the top left is showing. So remember, you're allowed to have 20,000 square feet of outdoor storage and 10,000 square feet of indoor storage. So it's kind of 30,000 square feet of storage and then whatever access road is around to get to it.
That's less than three quarters of an acre.
And so there you go for 10-acre parcel, if it's a rectangle. You can see that you're getting 50, 60,000 square feet of area that you can put that outdoor storage, the indoor storage, and whatever access road's around, it fits. That's your, anything bigger than 10 acres would give you more area. Anything less than 10 acres, you're not allowed to do it. Yeah, just under squares, spelled wrong.
Squar.
Squar.
I think that's...
That's probably a square bill, square.
That's the best spelling of square I've ever seen.
Yeah.
The only, the only, the only way we could be gained on this is with a 10,000 square foot building. Somebody could say, well, you know, you could have two 10,000 square foot buildings. They could say one is ag use and the other one is commercial, is industrial use. But anything would still be inside, so you could be gained on that. But downside is that everything would be enclosed.
Sorry, what do you mean by gained? You're just saying in addition to the...
Somebody could...
Called it by right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you mean.
Today, any of our ag parcel owners could put up a large building, say, that's a barn.
Yeah.
That's for ag use, I have all the ag stuff in it, can I come look in? And so our only recourse would be to, if we really want to get into it, we could get a search warrant and go out there and, I mean...
They could fake agriculture if they were self-employed.
Game is about the way to cheat. Nobody would do that.
I actually didn't think that. I thought game is something that we were allowing that was a win. But cheating is, again, that's a...
So in the past, when Michelle has, people have come in wanting accessory buildings. The way she's handled it is on the permit that it's issued for very explicitly states it's accessory to, you know, the principal use. And then from an enforcement perspective, if we somehow learn that it's not for that, then there's a direct line to the permit, then they're not doing what they said they were going to do. You know, enforcement would be easier, but ever getting to look inside the building is the trickier part. And we don't just hand out ag building app dates, I mean, Berlina. There is a process, it's not as rigid as it was in the past because we were doing things where there weren't a lot to do. So if somebody really wants to cheat, they can, just like anything else.
Yeah, and there's nothing that would stop them now from getting a bunch of agricultural use and using it. It's not, it doesn't, it's not really dependent on what we're doing here, that particular problem, other than maybe giving them some legitimate cover for part of what they're doing. It would make it harder to realize which, what's happening where.
Probably be pretty suspicious when they come in for a contractor's yard and then immediately come in for an ag building. I think we have somebody who's wanted to try to do that.
I mean, I have some things I, you know, this focus on width of the right of way rather than the road is something that doesn't always sit well with me. It does seem like it's more of a eliminate certain roads because they don't have a 50-foot right of way rather than dealing with the affirmative of what we'd like to see in the actual road that services the thing. But, you know, that's, we talk about these road requirements all the time and it's hard to get to the place we want to be, which I think, you know, we've been talking about in actually all three of our conversations tonight. So, you know, other than that, I don't see any bigger than, you know, I agree with Mr. Henry. I feel like this is a pretty good step forward.
I think they, I think this document handles the road in two different sections here, as Mr. Curry pointed out here. You've got line seven, section on paragraph 11 there, and then you've got a lot of C. So I think that 50-foot right of way gives ample width to work out any problem situation.
You're absolutely right. I was overlooking that part. I think it does, it's more comprehensive than I was giving it credit for by simply looking at the verb H of C.
And I think this will potentially keep it off of roads that are less than 50-foot. I think it's a way...
Yeah, exactly. Which is not a, which is a worthwhile thing on its own. It's just, the others are needed as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think Ms. Ritter commented on line 52, that it's probably a good idea, the minimum lot size should be 10 acres of ag. I think that that would be a great one word to put after that to address any situation that you put a 10-acre parcel next to the mountains that would be, you know, five acres of conservation, five acres of ag. Do you want it stuck in a more of a sensitive area like that without at least 10 acres of ag?
And these are allowable by special exception and ag are 5-R-V-C-V. So you have to find wording that blokes them all.
Yeah, right, yes.
And so...
10 acres in the allowed...
In the zoning district.
Allows, allows the zoning.
So, Mr. Curry, would that be something we could suggest in a public hearing?
I would change it forward.
Let's change it, I'm so unclear about Rappahannock.
Was there anything about the BOS conversation that you think would make that offensive?
No, I don't think that would be an issue at all. I think that's a great clarification.
So, Mr. Curry, since you're kind of going to be carrying this a little bit, what would be the appropriate couple's word?
In an allowable zoning district, if you tag that to the end, I think that works.
Okay. So is the board happy with everything else there? I'll make a motion that we request a joint public hearing with the BOS at their convenience to have a public hearing on this contractor's yard ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And thank you, Mr. Light. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? All right, thank you. Takes us to the next item, the evening standing and lodging amendments. We had talked about a few items last time. So Mr. Curry, update us on anything new for these? Or Mr. Curry?
I think this is the third version. The, there aren't track changes between the version we saw and this one, but there are track changes against existing. Okay, if that makes sense. After Michelle added stuff, I put in some just margin comments to highlight a few things. Happy to speak with that. I think one of the biggest things that's hanging out there is the continued, the discussion that I went back and watched your last meeting about, are there some objective VDOT standards that you can apply? And I think the biggest issue there is that the VDOT standards are for new roads.
No, 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 I wasn't talking about standards. I just want a classification of a road. What VDOT calls 211 is a particular type of style or road. Close to 522, which is condensed compared to...
Functional classifications.
Yeah, something that's standard. You know, a paved road with no lines and small shoulders or tiny... That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, I shared that information with Ms. Summers. VDOT has functional classifications of all roads. And you could definitely incorporate them into the ordinance if you wanted to. It's, doesn't guarantee a certain geometry is going to exist on the road because where I was going before, the, you know, the current standards are, if you built a new road, you need to meet this standard. We don't build a lot of new roads, so those standards don't really mean anything to our existing roads. They're all practically all inferior compared to what they should be with a new... Right, like if you were going to build Crest Hill Road today and have it be the category it is today, it would not, it would be more robust and straighter than it is today. But it's still a, you know, principal collector or arterial or whatever it's called. And we can go to the VDOT webpage and look through that. We can look through their GIS site that shows the designations for all the roads. And you could say, you can only do some of these uses on certain types of functional classification, which I think Ms. Lee has shared that I think Falky does that. When the board did talk a little bit about that in the terms of the contractor's yard, and they didn't want to go there. They thought it was too much restriction. And whether they think that level of restriction is appropriate for some of these lodging uses, maybe. But you absolutely... But you absolutely can do that. You can do public-private, that's an easy division. And then once you're in the public realm, you can divide that up any number of ways. Paved, unpaved, or, you know, paved at a certain width. Is that a width just in front of the use, or is it width all the way to the nearest primary? And there are certain standards that you could apply based on VDOT standards, based on the amount of vehicles and the type of vehicles on the road, based on to figure out the width that a road should be. If it's new, and you can, you can apply that in your ordinance and say you can have an RV park as long as the roads meet current standards or something like that, and you're practically limiting them to primaries. When you do that, and if that's what you wanna do, that's, you know, that's fine. It would pretty much exclude from secondaries, and if that's the intent.
Then explain it.
So, we struggled with this. Question is, when we look at the contractor's yard, potentially, you could have like the same type of vehicles used in a contractor's yard as a truck camper sizes that you'd use to use in a camping facility. So, would both, would that size fit this too? What we did in that ordinance fit here?
Yeah, I think what the last iteration of this lodging borrowed the language that was in the contractor's yard, that kind of more subjective language, and inserted it. And I think there's some feelings that, from your last meeting, that you do want some objective ceiling-type numbers, maybe in addition to the subjective language. And so, some of that's been attempted to insert back in, as you talked about, like for RV parks on line 90. The old ordinance said the road front edge requirement should be 200 feet out of state-maintained road with a minimum paved width of 20 feet. So that's back in. I don't know what that means. I don't know if that's only 20 feet along the 200 feet? Is that 20 feet all the way from there to the nearest primary? Is it, you know, what does that, what does that mean? And that should be clarified if you're gonna keep that language in there.
What's on line 190?
Relatively, I've noticed some use of paved and some of hard surface.
Yeah, and so paved and VDOT's land is asphalt. And a hard surface would include, like, what's happening to many of our gravel secondary roads where they receive a kind of a chip seal surface. It's not asphalt.
So we actually have.
I just wonder, I mean, I feel better with the 20-foot minimum back in place. And then do we have the same, the same language in place now for the country and his conference centers with the 20-foot minimum?
Was it in that one before, or if you can?
I just think if they're all sort of the same level of busyness, and I don't think you need the 200-foot.
Yeah, so, I mean, definitely different usage, as Mr. Henry pointed out. Some of the vehicles that are going to RV park are big. Either big RVs or big trucks full of big trailers, whereas a country inn is gonna be passenger vehicles and any service trucks.
Well, then maybe emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles, sure. So, we know that many of our public roads are close to being current standards, and if the commission's of a mind to only allow these sorts of uses on public roads that, you know, two large vehicles can pass or have a 20-foot width of pavement, and that, and you want that 20-foot width to be from the site to the nearest, you know, to the nearest primary road, we can definitely draft that language. We get into the conversation that we had a while back about the subdivisions on roads without a 50-foot right of way. You're very quickly eliminating everywhere. And if that's the intent, then just, you know, eyes wide open going into this, knowing that there aren't going to be secondary roads that meet that standard. And from, from an applicant standpoint, what do they have to do to come in and prove to you that it's 20 feet from their site all the way to the primary? Is that measured every 100 feet, every 10 feet, every 1,000 feet? What do you need to see to have that proved to you? Because VDOT doesn't have that.
You know, so I don't really understand. Country inn retreats or lodges should have direct access to the hard surface public road network and not required access by gravel surface roads. What does that mean?
What's intended to mean that you have that hard surface all the way from, all the way from wherever.
You have to front on a hard surface road.
Yeah.
But that would be a state hard surface road, and you have private hard surface road.
No, this is public.
Hard surface public road network. I think the, I think the, I think maybe part of the ambiguity is the direct access to network rather than saying shall, like, front on a hard surface public road.
But is a hard surface public road, I mean, a lot of these roads are gravel, like North Post.
Yeah, we wouldn't allow one on North Post under this.
You wouldn't allow a country inn or retreater a lodge?
Not of this scale.
And not with this wording, right? So, so what I was trying to get at with that is that there's usually way more than one way to get somewhere. Particularly if you're a guestman. There's like 100 ways, and none of them are direct. So however you have to get there, it can't require travel over gravel, even if, you know. But the.
That just seems crazy to me. Why, why, you know, it's just a regular car. It's, you know, why can't they go on a gravel road?
I think the issue is, when we discussed this, we were, we were trying to limit the location of these higher intensity overnight or other kind of gathering places to roads that had pretty clear public access and didn't go on private roads. So, maybe we dialed it in. It sounds like, certainly in your opinion, we dialed it in too much, but I think that was the intent. We are, you know, trying to go within a, you know, within the agricultural and conservation zoning districts, which cover just about everything. How do we dial it in to places that are suitable? And the kind of dialing in what kind of roads they need to be on is one of the only ways.
No, I understand what we're doing, but I, I also, but I'm just not sure. Like a country inn, let's say you have a country inn or a retreat, like Chancellor's Rock.
That's up to 20 rooms and up to 40 people.
Yeah, so let's say I want 10 rooms, 20 people. I can't do that on a gravel road.
Not according to this.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that, it just seems, maybe not a lot of places that are gonna be, they're agribusiness, they're gonna be using their places for people to spend the night. You know, or they're hunt places, you know, 100 dress, I don't know how many people she has there, but that's all. North Post too, you gotta have 10, you know, at least 10 people in a variety of rooms.
The last draft just said public road, and I think, I don't know, maybe we're in glass being, like, commission had some concern with that level of an intensity on a gravel road.
I think public road, either that or change.
Added with all the firm guidelines, always comes the subjective review by the planning commission and the board supervisor to the public hearings with the ability to place conditions. And so, to what extent does the public want the planning commission and board to put blinders on or guardrails in that you couldn't approve something outside of this realm without changing the ordinance? And that's, you know, that's what changing these words does.
Yeah, no, I understand it. I just think, you know, in the future, people are gonna really have a hard time making it on agriculture. And if you can't make it a little more flexible.
20 units, 20 units is a big place.
Yeah, 20 units is a big, if you go 10 units, it's not.
Well, they could do it on.
So you've got, added breakfast, which is five rooms, 10 people. And then you jump to the next category, country inn, which is the 20 rooms, 40 people. And then you jump from there to the conference of lodging, which is a lot of people.
Well, we could have a two-step road standard for the country inns and say, up to 10 rooms, 20 people may front on a gravel public road. Still public, not private, but between 10 and 20 rooms, up to 40 people should front on a paved public road.
There is no problem with that.
Shall. Those, those should, but yes, yeah, absolutely.
I think, I can see the wisdom of that. I can see the wisdom of some scalability in that requirement.
So, so one thing you have to remember here is that this country inn here is gonna serve food. So, you're gonna have a trash truck coming in, picking up the dumpsters on this gravel road. You're gonna have food trucks coming in. They're probably gonna sell alcohol with their wheels. So you're gonna have beer trucks coming in. So you're gonna have a whole slew of commercial larger-sized vehicles using this gravel road. So it's, it's one thing to talk about the citizen traffic of people that are gonna be using themselves, but when you look at the accessory traffic of all these suppliers coming in here, that's probably where you get the no issue. You know, so that's, that's where the health and safety comes into play of that gravel road. And of course, you're gonna have, you know, a lot more FedEx trucks coming in there, you know.
So, you're now opening up the, the point of events are, can happen at these kinds of facilities.
Well, I mean, I mean, if you got, if you got, if you got 20 people there, you know, you got, you got 20 units or 15 units, whatever, you're gonna have quite a few people there. That's gonna take a lot of goods and services.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, to me, it's just like the difference between those trucks going in to serve to 15 or 20 people. How different is that from fox hunters who have enormous trailers going up and down these roads? And they're up to 40, 40 of them. I mean, you know, it's a distinction.
Today, you have no road requirements in special, the special requirements up in line 154. And so whatever you add is restricting further than what is available today. Recognizing that you have the subjective review of the site saying, I mean, maybe gravel, maybe paved, but that one's really curvy and hilly and isn't the right place.
And that would fall into general standards.
That would fall into the general standards and general ability to have conditions based on what was presented.
We've seen done any number of times.
But it might be the best gravel road that ever existed in, in public network. And you had a tourist home on, on arguably a really nice gravel road, but it didn't technically meet type 2 standards. The road in many respects was way better than a type 2 road, but in some, it didn't meet it, so no good. And the neighbors didn't like it, so.
So, if you look at where in the county, do we have these kind of places or hotspots of these kind of places? I guess you got Good Gordon, you got Blue Rock, and to some higher version, you got Castleton down at Farms with what's going on down there. And they all, and I guess Castleton would be the most rural location. And, but they have a good paved road all the way from 211 down to that location, and I don't think.
The Chancellor's is also technically a country inn. You've touched it somewhere.
Yeah.
Remind me where Chancellor's is.
Right near Jericho and.
North Post way. But that is, is a very occasional use, isn't it?
Yeah. But you better. I can't remember where I put it.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure.
I think it's the bottom of the shelf.
Yep, here it is.
Country inn. The famous span line. That one's, but that's, that's been.
Are we there?
What's your long answer?
I can't remember.
Is that worked up?
Yes, it's under.
Which meeting?
The October 16th, 24, under ordinance transit lodging. So we have the Blue Rock, Good Gordon.
Bill Mead.
Bill Mead. And Chancellor's Rock.
What is Smith and Moon?
Oh, Good Gordon.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Spaholdes. Let's put on, oh, that was. Yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
That's not approved.
Nope.
So everything but Chancellor's Rock is a hard surface. And that was a very minimal use at Chancellor's Rock. Which is probably why it got through.
Yeah, they were allowed up to 14 people total.
They had like two or three different rooms, and they were doing table dinners and wanted to occasionally allow people to spend the night or something.
Yeah.
And they've made it work with that. This is.
Yeah. I don't think they've really been doing it where.
From a maintenance standpoint, I think it would be much better to have a hard surface road. The more gravel roads you have, the more problems with VDOT, the better to maintain them. And the more traffic that you have on a gravel road, it requires a whole lot more maintenance. Because you're gonna have potholes, and VDOT, they have their hands full of doing other work as well. So it'd be difficult, causes them a little difficulty maintaining the gravel road. Not, not recommendation, to keep the hard surface road in there.
Any other thoughts, Summers?
I kinda like this stage, because I think the difference between 10, which can almost feel like a house and a private thing, and 20, which feels like a, like a different category, that felt like a pretty good compromise to me. I don't know that the, I mean, I, to Al's point, I think, again, the more, the more people you have, the more likely it is you're gonna have more kinds of commercial stuff coming in to serve 30 people versus 20.
What if we drop lower than 10? What if we drop it down to five? Because it sounds like that fits the Chancellor's Rock model, is that it's just a couple of rooms.
Five minutes.
Five units, 10 people. And that way, it really is like a micro.
That is the 10 people, because what we're doing here is 10, right?
No, it's Chandler's Rock, it's seven units. I think, I think that's a good idea. I think five units.
I think five units, that is, it's like micro.
Up to five, up to five, and then for six, to 20, it's so paid.
A bed and breakfast, which is up to five. Someone would be, would likely apply for a bed and breakfast if they have five lodging rooms as opposed to a country inn, because it's more predictable. That requires right now, it can be public or private, and the type 2 standard, just like tourist homes, right? And so then, then. And so then, then the next step up would be a small country inn, would require some road standard. Probably no longer private, based on what you've been talking about, public only. But certain types of public, like you could have a gravel road, but it has to be public. And then the next step up is the public road, but it has to have a hard surface. So where do those dividing points? It doesn't make a lot of sense to have the dividing point the same as B and B to country inn, unless you want all the country in just to.
But the, the reason why you maybe stop at five in the inn category is, is because you're doing food service for the country inn. You're not necessarily doing food services for B and B.
Well, I mean, bed and breakfast is allowed to serve meals to people who are there. A country inn is allowed to serve meals to people who are there and other people, unless there's a condition. So that's valid. I would argue that not many people are gonna apply for a country inn for five rooms if they can do bed and breakfast.
But I think the distinction, and this is actually an area that I don't personally really articulate as well, is what are those uses that involve people who aren't necessarily spending the night there? I mean, I think this has always been a question about, you know, uh, bed and breakfast. I know when we ran a bed and breakfast, it was kind of flexible. It's like, well, you have, you can do some things with that that, you know, are kind of implied, but I don't know that that's very clear right now in terms of, you know, this distinction between having other people come in for food service events at a, at a lodge versus a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, so the definition for bed and breakfast says they may serve meals to overnight guests.
Only overnight guests.
Whereas a, a country inn is a more commercial endeavor. Which is, which is one of the reasons why that use of the conference user, part of this is moving them to be a commercial use.
Well, I think we're really splitting hairs now. And, and if it, if it garners more agreement to say, well, the, the scenario we've had is seven. And why not, okay, drive it to seven, leave it there and see if we have anything that ever submits an application and what the board supervisors thinks of seven. Because that, that fits the one, the small-scale application that we've had that actually is on a gravel road of the second. That was what a previous board found acceptable.
I agree. I think that's a, that's.
Let's do what we did. I wasn't here, was anyone here?
That, that, you know, that was presented as somebody that was interested in, in, in grasses, uh, native plants. And they were gonna have some seminars here and bring some people in and, and things like that, I believe. So it was gonna be somewhat of an environmental classroom out there with, with very limited, a couple of times a year. So it was approved with a very limited scope presented to us as, as their operation.
And does, is it an operation? Does anybody know?
I don't think it is. I think I, I recall a question coming in that they wanted to maybe change something and they haven't really done anything.
This is the place that was associated.
I thought they were gonna have people spend the night, I just remember a public hearing and then they were gonna have, you know, the food served.
It was focused around the farm-to-table food.
Restaurant somewhere else.
And they had all these lodging places on their parcel anyway. And they said, well, if we ran up a farm-to-table thing, we would love to be, if people stay over.
Yeah.
So it went from there. And I think the farm-to-table thing never would've gone for whatever reason, probably pandemic. What I've seen in other ordinances, which I think completely eliminates the value of putting hard limits in, is like you have for, in the tourist home, where it says, uh, you need to, um, be on a, I don't need to guess, I'll just read it.
You know, another reason why you wanna keep that traffic down on these gravel roads in a scenario like this is that you got people coming to these locations and they're coming there by booking something on Airbnb or DROB or whatever, they're just urban residents. And these urban residents don't know how to drive on gravel roads. And they're gonna hit a gravel road at fifty-five miles an hour and, you know, they're not be on the track.
I've seen a lot of local people do this.
Well, I know.
So on line two thirty-six, in the tourist home and bed and breakfast section, is the section that you just dealt with in your last meeting. And A and C zones, the minimum acreage requirement of tourist homes bed and breakfast shall be ten to twenty acres. Provided, however, the board can waive the minimum acreage requirement only if the property is furnished on a paid public road. So you can put a limit in and say, you know, zero to five can be on a gravel road. Six to twenty can be on a paved road, but the board can waive it if there's certain, you know, if certain things happen. But if you have a, a ability to waive it, then it's kind of not even a requirement.
And I, I mean, I, I think that can be a setup or.
Yeah, we just went through that. Predictability is good, although with any special exception, there's little predictability in outcome. And, and people need to know that coming in. And, and if you really want predictability on having a lodging use, then you're gonna have to go to a commercial area and do a byright use.
Any further thoughts on the road standard?
Well, I like the seven, the, uh, seven units or how do we phrase it? Being permitted on a, on a paved road.
I just think we're not gonna get too many, up to seven. Most of them are gonna be for more than that.
And then presumably, nothing can resolve that, for the conference center with lodging, which are even bigger, that's just, that's, you gotta be on a paved public road. And then what? Is it a certain kind of paved public road or hard surface? Is it, you know, like the, for, is it a, you know, a collector, an arterial, or, you know? Does that have to be a primary? You, if, if you wanna further restrict that, the caution is that these conference centers with lodging are restricted on where they can go in zoning in agriculture. Because if you're in, if it's a commercial use, then you're basically a hotel move-in. So, you know, if you say you can only go in agriculture, but you have to be on a certain type of road, but that type of road doesn't exist anywhere in agriculture, then, you know, that's never really accomplished.
I mean, I think it's challenging. In the county hard surface roads, driving, driving, you know, as far as a guardrail is concerned. Yeah, to your point, I think the, the hard surface is pretty limiting and it's a guardrail kind of issue. We have the general standards, I think, to, to rule out sites that we don't think are on hard surface roads that are safe and appropriate for that use. So I, I don't have a particular problem with that. I mean, I think it cuts both ways. Once you start specifying it, it feels more like then we don't have any discretion to alter that in either direction. I think the more you, the more it seems like we try to think of all the scenarios, the less discretion there is when we come to set the conditions.
That's very true in an appeal situation where, you know, the board is making a legislative decision on where it's appropriate. But when you have very clear hurdles put in place and somebody can come in and say, I jumped over every single one of your hurdles that you laid out and you still denied it. So you have to be really thinking about what those hurdles should be. It's not to say that you can't be a subjective on top of the hurdle. It's just, it's, it's, you know, taking some of your, you know, power away from that subjective decision when you're in, in court.
Well, I think the other way to handle that, which we're pretty shy about, is just building in what we should be considering when we improve the site. You know, it's a paved road deemed to have suitable access. So at least then, it, it kind of makes it clear that the intent is for this body to have.
Yeah, you know, I think that even small wording changes like that are, are help the reader applicant understand that it is still subjective.
It's not a switch, you know? Maybe that would be a help for this section. I, I just don't like that.
Should we include the same language that we are, uh, thinking about including, or at least some of it, that we have now under recreational vehicle park? Knowing that it's gonna be more than forty people, applications, we could make it may be required to have included a traffic management plan indicating the number and types of vehicles normally used in the site and describing the existing road geometry, including surface treatment width and horizontal and vertical. Or we maybe don't need to include the curb information. But now I, we could just say applications may be required to include a traffic management plan.
Yeah, my concern about that, I mean, I like that they do it, but it only, it only helps if we can make a decision based on that. So all it says is the application has to include it and it doesn't tie to our ability to, to say yes or no based on whether we think that plan is adequate. Doesn't feel quite like enough to me.
So for, for byright uses where it's a managerial decision of staff, it is a check-the-box, you know, and you would need clear direction in the ordinance of what does it take to clear the hurdle? But for a legislative decision, it is inherently subjective. And so you're putting notice on the applicant to provide you the information to, for him, for them to substantiate that their use is acceptable because all the reasons I put in my plan makes it acceptable. And then you can say you did a good job with the plan or you didn't.
Does the, does the language say, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front right now, but does the language say an acceptable, uh, plan of some sort? Because maybe it should. I mean, then it's, then it's sort of both ways. It's like, they have to put it in and we have to find it acceptable.
We could say, um, at the, like we did similarly at the request of the zoning administrator, planning commissioner, the board supervisors, applicants may be required to include a traffic management plan indicating the number and types of vehicles normally used in the site. That must be, must be approved as part of the application. I just think a lot of this falls to general standards too.
Yeah, I do. My concern about this is it doesn't, even, even that, doesn't get to the, you can't do it here because we don't like your plan. This just says, yep, we gave you a plan and we're gonna enforce it.
You know, in the past, in, in the past, where we've had some really large turnouts has been, uh, for proposals that were on the back roads. And, uh, the one that I can think of in particular was Monastery Road School that was proposed. I think it was Bearwallow Road there behind Front Hill. And there was a big, big turnout there. And, you know, the traffic for Monastery School, you know, it's, it's, uh, basically, I guess you'd call it potentially nine months out of the year, maybe longer, that morning to evening. And that those people, the community there, just chewed that application up one side and down the other for the impact, for lack of information and everything. So what we think is, is maybe not enough or too much. I think the general public, when they have an application on a back road for a conference center or a lodge or whatever, they're gonna wanna see maximum info, info on it to, to know how it's gonna affect their life back on the back road. So, uh, the more you have info, I think the more citizens will be placated and happy with more stuff to make.
So you, it sounds like you're advocating that they shall be required to submit a traffic management plan.
I'm just saying, you know, you know, the more you have to look at and the more decisions, I mean, the better quality decision that you can make. Particularly if they're gonna have some things going on there, like, you know, some group could come in there and rent the place for a day and, and do a seminar, lecture, whatever, or it'll happen on a weekend, a flower show, whatever. You know, these kind of things are important to know and to know potential traffic volume on a gravel road. Or even if it's a paved road, it's, it's, it's not, you know, I think these things that we've approved on two eleven and five twenty-two, you know, a few people came out, but generally, it was pretty well-accepted that, you know, the access was good, the impact was minimal.
So you could put a, uh, require a higher bar on a secondary versus a primary, right? For traffic and all that stuff.
Again, is that adhering to the general standards? Could we really articulate that in a way that we?
I would say yes and no, but it provides some level of predictability for an applicant that they're not gonna have to jump through a bunch of hoops of showing what the roads are like if they're on a primary versus if they're on a secondary.
So for instance, we could make the traffic plan part of the, the part of the segment.
Well, I, I think that, you know, though, even on the primary road, the Blue Rock application with the exit from, onto the highway, because it is a divided highway, we talked about the, I don't maybe have the word right, but the collar or the channelizing of the exit as they leave the property for the intensity that they were looking to use the event center, that really would've been an appropriate addition to have. And as it was for the use, they were approved, we didn't require it, but it was part of the discussion.
Well, for that matter, you could, uh, require in here that, um, you know, any, a conference center or country inn located on, on a divided highway include a channelized entrance, you know?
I know. We were trying to keep it simple when we started all this. It's always.
So in what part do you wanna lead to the subjective nature of a legislative decision of the board after they've gone through a couple of public hearings? And what part do you want to kind of mandate through and put in the guardrails? You know, so that's a, you know, different people in the community are gonna have different ideas of what those guardrails should be. Whether it be business-friendly, flexible, or restrictive, not in my backyard. And some ideas have to figure out the middle ground that makes the most sense for our community that the public will agree with and then ultimately the board will agree with.
I feel like we might need a little more time and fresh thinking on this than we're able to apply at this point in this meeting.
Let, let's review our options then before the next meeting and gather our thoughts. And I think we've made good progress tonight on these couple of very specific and very important points that, um, I would like to have resolved.
Do we have guidance on what kind of updates we might have in language for the last one? Did we agree we want to have the seven cut off in there and?
Is that generally agreeable? Are you all agreeable to seven on a dirt road?
I think we should see that language and, and let's get, I mean, that's agreed that we're gonna see it. We're not, we're not voting it forward at this point. We're just asking for that to be incorporated so we have something more concrete to react to next meeting.
That sounds reasonable. And then it, it sounds like we're heading in the direction of a traffic management plan for the conference center. So if staff could maybe craft some language about the, uh, what was it, the volume?
Traffic management plan indicating number and types of vehicles.
Number, types, volume.
Spreading existing road geometry, surface treatment. Spreading existing road geometry, surface treatment.
Yep.
Contractors, yard line 73.
Yep. So, so I think we're, if we can get that language worked out for the conference center, we'll be headed in the right direction.
Is there any other items other than those two things?
I know the screening had come up. That was the only other thing.
That's it?
Yeah.
That's it.
So I think we should be offset with that.
Yeah, so my comment there was, what is special about parking, loading, swimming pools, and tennis courts is they need extra attention on screening. What about the other things?
Are you?
Yeah, and, and I just, you call those out specifically and then.
There's supposed to be screening around the boundary if it's a commercial, of course. Is that right?
No. I mean, it, it has to subjectively meet the 17052A, which is, you know, just generally be compatible, right? And so these particular accessory uses, they have, you know, a bocce, right? They don't have to screen the bocce if it's next to a park. But you do have to pull, but not the bocce, or the.
Frisbee golf.
Frisbee golf, or the.
Where's our bocce?
I don't know. I'm just saying, as a country.
Can't see it because they're screened.
And so, you know.
Maybe it's in the bar.
Anytime in the zoning world when we begin to make lists, you know, when you, when you kind of restrict something, you're kind of inherently approving something else. And so those lists can be dangerous in that sense.
You know, really, really, I think from our standpoint, I think a general landscape plan with concentration on parking areas. The parking area is the real thing that is not, that's not natural to an ag area. So there's a screening of the parking as you have the parking out here at Blue Rocks being screened. I, I think that is the most important thing is the parking because that's unnatural. I mean.
And you call for effective screening in a lot of different places, but having, you know, provide a landscape plan that shows effective screening of, you know, the use.
And what I'm saying, what I'm saying in that statement is that, you know, it's just a landscape plan, not particularly, they're going to have trees and stuff on, on the areas that they're going to use, but on the parking area, it's going to be more intense to, to accomplish the purpose of screening. The really other is just, I don't call it decorative or just whatever. Parking is really, it's an important screening area to make.
So the current draft has the old language in there. It just, there's a whole lot of things that are left off the list.
Yeah, I like that.
You got three, three examples.
Not that, I like that language not intended to be an exhaustive list of the things that shall be screened, but a set of examples of the kinds of things we would expect screening in a more general way. That's, I mean, I think that's getting to the point and not requiring a plan particularly because we don't want to get into where they're, you know, planting their shrubs necessarily. But I do, maybe, maybe we can rework that language, show that those are not, they're not appear as a, as a, as a complete list, but are examples for the need for general screening.
So we should say something like include a general landscaping plan to include, but not limited to effectively screening parking and loading areas, swimming pools, and tennis courts.
Which would go along with, you know, 17052A, you know, location, size, and height of building structure, walls and fences, and the nature of extended screening, buffering and landscaping shall be subject to use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and or use of adjacent nearby.
Well, it sounds like we're singing from the same hymnal on that one. If we can get that smaller, small peak in place will be a good thing.
Generally for accessory uses, they can go as close to the props, the side and rear property line as they are tall, but no closer than 10 feet. So if you're a pool, I mean, you can be right up to the neighbor. And so this does say no structure of campsite or athletic facility shall be located closer than 100 feet. And maybe you just want to restrict any accessory use that solves some of the screening stuff. If you just don't allow it next to the property line. These things got to have 20 acres. So maybe there should be nothing next to the property line. And if you keep it far enough away from the property line, the screening becomes much less efficient.
Some of the walls that are, you know, constructed between.
Yeah. I, I, I reminded of the frisbee golf course that has the spots right up on the property line and the neighbors have to deal with people retrieving their frisbees.
That's an athletic facility, though. Oh wait, that's a nonprofit organization.
Yeah.
What's tennis?
So let me, this is food for thought on.
So what, what would be your proposed tweak there to clean it up, Gary?
I would ask the question, what is it that you're trying to, what impact are you trying to mitigate? And that's, that's what you should be thinking about for special exceptions. They cause impacts to the community that are not normally caused on the community. And if you allow this use to go there, then there are protections you want to put in place to mitigate that unusual impact.
And I would say you're trying to mitigate the unusual visual pollution results of construction that's not typical of that area use.
Large parking lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also think it's the retrieving frisbees or picking up, you know, stuff that goes over. I mean, is that, is that applied, is that discussed elsewhere? Is that addressed elsewhere? You know, I kind of lost track of that thread if we were jumping around.
Well, there's the general subjectivity, but other than this particular requirement for certain things not being closer than 100 feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
So should any accessory use on, on one of these country inns be allowed to be within 100 feet of the?
Well, that makes sense to me. I mean, we have farms and stuff that have to be 100 feet.
I think, I think it works well. And like Gary was saying, the, the kind of the nuisance factor.
Yeah.
Provides a buffer for the nuisance. All right, I think, I'm sensing everyone's in a good spot with this revision and we can hopefully get this completed next time.
A point of progress.
Okay. Sounds good. That takes us to the comp plan review. I did meet with Ms. Summers and Mr. Curry the other week. And we sketched out a, a basic framework for the comp plan work for the year to include speakers to make presentations for, for us on the topics that we previously discussed that were of the most interest and likely needed update. But that wouldn't be exhaustive and drag us into a lot of topics that we might not need to take on since the review was so thorough on our last comp and review. So just to name a few, obviously, Mr. Stevens this evening was the first for the fire rescue. We talked about Dr. Grimsley from the schools. Mr. Curry, I think he volunteered to come to talk to us about the broadband effort, if I remember that correctly. We talked about Patrick Monty from the regional commission coming to speak to us and about a number of topics to include affordable housing and to engage the folks from Rush River also about affordable housing. And it seems like there were a few more. Oh, and also kind of love from the, our extension agent to come talk to us about the state of agriculture in the county at this time.
When do you guys start digging on the sewers?
Oh, I mean, we could invite folks, oh, and I think we talked about having the town come to speak to us possibly, which I don't believe we've done before. And also we could have this Barryville Water and Sewer folks come speak to us as well.
If we're thinking those are going to expand, then we better know whether they can.
Well, they're, I can tell you the authorities that Water and Sewer 38 is not in the business of expanding the system.
But is whether or not they're expanding, how many can they serve? Are they serving?
They've been through that a number of times. I'm sure they would love to talk to you about that.
And didn't we tonight discuss either something about the Rapid Home or Rapid Home Health Network or some part of that?
Yes, so if, if there are other agencies or individuals that we would like to engage, let's make a list. So Rapid Home, it sounds like, we have a will to hear from them. And anyone else? Auctions?
The food pantry, do we want to hear that?
We could hear from the food pantry. I think the food pantry, Rapid Home, and the Benevolent Fund all made extensive presentations to the board of supervisors, what, in January, January, February? So that's on the record, but we could certainly invite them to come and make a presentation. I would just ask that we kind of, I have a feeling if, if we have multiple speakers, then we have also public hearings, then we may be crunched for time. So just keep that in mind. And then, of course, in the review, we encounter other topics for which we would like to invite speakers, we can certainly add those quotes at a later date.
So you're, you're talking about kind of a road show as well to the fire stations?
That was the second part of the.
Some of the groups could go to more and more of those? If they can't fit into your regular cycle with the public hearings?
I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel about that, but I, I see that as time for people that live in that area to talk to us about what's important to them. And I would hate to show up thinking we might hear from them and then have a presentation that doesn't intersect with that topic at all.
We're worried you're going to hear from Karen and Anita and all those.
And if that's the way it starts to happen, then.
Not that we're worried, we'd love to hear from you, just you're the only ones that are going to be at the six different events.
Well, I mean, if, if that's a way to stagger it and get everybody in, we could certainly do it that way.
As I recall by, when we did that before, there was people that came out, but they were not lined up to the microphone. Public comments happened in our.
Do you think, do you think having a presentation like that would help engage public, public interest?
I mean, the concern I have is if, if somebody from another district is interested in that presentation, it does start to kind of, the, the low capital, low litch of, it's almost like it's a countywide meeting just taking place in a, in a remote location. So that, that's my only concern, as long as we allow for both dynamics to, to come out to the extent that people want to talk about it, I think that's fine. But in a way, we could have people having to drive further to hear the presentation because they're in Flint Hill and that's in, you know, it's Castle Town.
That would be unfortunate.
This time around, it wasn't like the other times around. We've got this beautiful video recording of our meeting over there going on.
I don't think that we'll have the media, though, maybe in all the breakout sessions.
I mean, at the.
At the firehouse? That would be nice if the paper would cover them. All right, we'll work on it. I mean, I think there's an opportunity there. I think there's an opportunity at Barryville, particularly the Water and Sewer Authority.
Yeah, some things have.
They are. If the town of Washington would like to come and speak, I think when we go to Washington Volunteer Fire Department, that's a logical intersection.
Yeah.
I think there are opportunities that are regionally specific, but the more countywide locations, we should probably hear in the court. And we can stagger to work accordingly. But if you all have any thoughts about others you'd like to hear from, we can certainly take that on as well. Any concerns about that or questions?
I think Bonnie was another to just talk.
Oh, the financial health, that's correct. So, so we've, we've got that going and working on scheduling another two of those a month. Asking for kind of a targeted discussion and a review of the, what's on the record already of the comp plan, the guide to discussion, and we should be in good shape. And that takes us to the last item of old business, events sponsored by nonprofit organizations, which would refer back to us from the board supervisors and the priority of Summers. Or Mr. Curry, do you have any?
I think it started out as a very narrow ask and then some months later it expanded for the planning commission to go through an exercise similar to what you've been doing for lodging, but for events, which there's some crossover. And there's a kind of a continuum of events with different intensities that one could imagine that could occur in the county. And probably small events on big parcels need little oversight and restriction. And big events on small parcels need a whole lot of restriction. And then there's a whole mixture in between. So we've got field parties and, you know, wedding sort of events that have been permitted at wineries and other things. And having probably a whole new list of definitions of types of different magnitude of events that could overlay on top of your existing uses. If it's a country inn or, or something, or a bend breakfast, or a tourist home, or a whatever. If you have a tourist home that's on 500 acres, something there might be totally different than a tourist home on 10 acres. And so thinking about how to, how to lay that out and what sort of restrictions should be in place relative to access, relative to minimum yards, relative to noise restrictions, amplified, not amplified hours, any of those things. I think it's wide open because what we have now is really very cumbersome. And there is some good information in field parties that can inform some of that discussion, but.
I mean, I think there's a fundamental question here about overlapping uses writ large because events are by definition sort of very ephemeral. They happen on a day or a couple of days. And these other uses, we generally think about them as kind of constant. And so I think one of the challenges we have with this is it's, there's this sort of conceptual thing that's, like you just said, all these things could mean different things with these other perpetual uses. So, you know, it, it is a very, there's a lot of angles to it. And I think we've always struggled when we've tried to sort it out. So I think we should, I think we should do it. I think it's a growing issue in the county and one that's only going to grow further as we have larger numbers of people, you know, an hour's driving distance to us who still think we're in the country and they're not. So, you know, I think it's very important, but it does sound like a big deal.
I just, I always struggle with a few of the long time recurring events in the county and how do we draft or craft this in such a way that it's not impactful to our cornerstone institutions like the Hunt, the Mets, Breakfast on, or Sunrise Service on Reddit.
Yeah.
And this was the same stumbling block we previously met. And I have to say, I have been thinking about it and I still don't have an answer of that. For me as a supervisor, I will tell you, I, I think we had more events start. Ironically enough, during COVID, we had more large events start during COVID. And I received more complaints about events during COVID than since. Some of the events have kind of gone away and, or people have stopped complaining about them.
Or it was outdoor and stuff, but anyway, I'm not sure what they, what exactly you're looking for now. I think it is an important issue. I guess mildly, only minor speech is that I think this is a, it's, the title makes it seem kind of simple, especially if you just limit it to the nonprofit use. But if you really start trying to take on all these events, it, it, it can become quite complex quite quickly. Maybe part of that first discussion should be carving it up into manageable pieces to your, to your point about, you know, wanting to get the low hanging fruit.
So looking at nonprofit and profit, it's kind of, it seems to me it's very similar to the situation we, we dealt with, with the sign situation. It was, a sign is a sign, but it's a print. It's not the message, it's the print. So whether it's, we would like to differentiate between profit and nonprofit, but you, you've got the same issue with the nonprofit as you do with the profit, with the trial and all of these kind of things. So, I mean, are you? So, I mean, are you cheating the public in terms of safety if you give the nonprofit a break?
I think the discussion expanded beyond the nonprofit, that was one aspect of, do I think you can legally do it? Probably. What you allow now is that certain types of events require a special exception. However, if you're a nonprofit, you're allowed to do it by right, and the other people have to do a special exception. And even a non-nonprofit one can do it like once every three years.
Do it in two years? No, no, I said they can do anything.
Yeah, 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 or if you can do the big cooter thing, once every three years.
You can do it every year on every property.
Right, yeah. So, that's probably not appropriate, although it's not been a problem.
Let me ask you this, I mean, could we approach this thing from the standpoint of the way we review a carnival, in that, you know, a carnival comes in, you have a building inspector come in and look at the equipment and say it's safe. Could we say to an applicant, okay, come in, submit your plan, your parking, and we will review and give you a permit to do that? I mean, I mean.
I mean, access, parking, and restrooms are the big things for events. And field parties, you require some planning for that sort of thing. So if you can, you can do that administratively, or you can do it through a public process?
Instead of getting into a special exception situation where we have discussions, multiple minds, and struggle with it, make it more, like you said, an administrative process.
You certainly can, whether the community would accept that.
Is that bad?
It's, it's an appetite for what, you know, what you want to see happen, right? That is clearly, if you jump over the hurdles, you will get your permit, period. And if the board and the planning commission community is okay with that, that is by far the most efficient way to do it.
Yeah.
Because you're not wasting somebody's time, and they don't know, they're going to pay $900, and they're not sure if it's going to, going to happen or not. They have to do this whole big plan, they have no expectation about them. But if you build uncertainty, then they're more likely to apply and go through the gauntlet. Now, whether that's what the community wants to see or not, I don't know.
But that also deals with each event one at a time. I think the other dimension to this that we're, that we're dealing with is the facility that wants to be in the business of hosting these events in some way, and having them on a regular basis. I mean, we could, I think we could extend this concept and say, well, you can have a facility that has events, but every one of your events has to come in to get a permit, and you may or may not get it, so you may not be able to have it. That's going to prevent that kind of business model from going very far. So I feel like every time we've gotten into this, it's more about one, you know, singular events at different types of venues that are designed to have.
So you basically propose to have like a fairgrounds?
I'm not proposing.
Well, but your concept.
Yeah, the concept is.
It would be like having a fairgrounds, and within that fairgrounds, somebody can rent that facility for the weekend or an event or whatever, and the people coming to the county would know that's, if they want to do something, that's where they go.
Well, the venue is what, kind of generally, you know, an event venue, and Blue Rock wanted to have one, and applied for one in their last country inn with an event venue, and it was part of the country inn as kind of an accessory to that, and that event venue part didn't make it through the public hearing process and was withdrawn, because it.
Voluntarily.
Voluntarily. So they could apply within a year, and it's already been more than a year. So, so that is, you know, kind of part of this continuum, you know. A field party can be permitted one time, it can say, you could say, you can have one field party event per month, you know, maximum X number of people. You could also say, you're allowed to build a building that can accommodate X number of people, but you can only use the building X times a month or whatever. So that's all in this continuum, it's very, very broad. Some localities will only permit the structure, and there's no permit whatsoever for just a gathering or an event somewhere. I think that's risky.
I did wonder, I don't remember reviewing a lot of alternative language from other counties the first time we did this. Can we dive into examples of how other counties handle this? When Mr. Stevens was speaking, I wondered if that was something that we should do with this, is see how other localities handle this, especially rural, similarly sized localities that value peace and quiet.
It's a particular concern for the agritourism side of things, where they think it's customary, it's a customary use, and they don't have to follow the building code for the building that they're inviting people in to gather. Rocky Ham's done a ton of work on it.
Oh, Rocky Ham, that would be great.
Well, every county, I'm just thinking, every county around this has fairgrounds, where you've been to, we've got Park, Page, Madison, Culpeper, Falkir, they all have.
More.
They all have fairgrounds, where you can go, there's things for weekly, monthly, big and small.
But those are public properties, right?
No, no, most of them are stockholder nonprofits, Falkir County is not a public nonprofit.
Non-staff corporations?
Yep. So, I mean, that's, that's a pretty interesting path. Right now, you basically, I guess the most intense issue you have in the county now is probably Bimbinu, where you have a race on the 4th of July there.
Well, I don't know, that pavilion at the county park is.
Because that's, that's just, you know.
And that'd be an accessory use too.
I mean, Amistville Carnival is pretty intense. Plus you have a parade, you have tons of parked cars, you know. I mean, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot of traffic.
That isn't, is that technically, did they call that?
It's a nonprofit playground, I mean, park or whatever, and they get.
It's a, yeah, a government partner event, so that date was sort of like what the model was constructed to allow, so.
What brought this one? What's that? What brought this one? What's broken?
It started, I think, with the, the nonprofits kind of the get out of jail free card, to just do your events. And so each nonprofit was holding an event at a same parcel. So then a parcel can become fairly active with a number of nonprofits. It, maybe it's not a profit, maybe it is. And then it expanded to, there were, was a tourist home individual who wanted to hold events at their tourist home, but, you know, had a small lot, and actually snuck through in the period where the 10 and 20 kind of went away because it was struck down before it could back. And so, you know, they wanted to potentially have events, and there's no way to do it, can't do it. And so that came into it. And then it just went from there and expanded out to the whole thing with the old, maybe 2018, 19, Bill Fletcher feeling. And so it just became, well, if you're going to start looking at these handful of event things, it's time to think about the whole thing.
It's hard to pull it apart.
Permit them, don't permit them, permit them.
So what does, what does the board supervisors look for? Do they want one central location, or they just want such a location plus a permitting process for any place in the county for single events or multiple? Are they looking for a permanent event or permanent site?
Well, I don't, I can't speak for them. But they, I didn't, I've not heard them say ever they were looking for a fairground type site to centralize these things. It was all these different concepts of events that are intermixing and overlapping that became the, we need to look at any way you can do an event anywhere and start to classify them into reasonable tranches that have reasonable increasing controls based on the impacts they can cause.
So Page County, just to give you all an example, they actually defined what they call a banquet facility, because so many farms were building these barns, they were not used as agricultural barn, but people, they used them for people to get married at. I mean, that was a huge thing. And then we also have, in Page County, we have like concerts down on the river or something. Well, then they require them to come in and get a festival permit each year, and that may be like a one-time-a-year thing. That has to go in front of the board supervisors to be approved, where like these other banquet facilities that are used every weekend for weddings, reunions, you name it, have to come in and get a special permit. And they allow them anywhere.
But the special permit is for each event or is for the whole?
The facility itself.
With Miller's Farm.
Yeah, and Jimmy Swinmore's farm.
Yep.
But those are nice barns. We don't mind them, they are pre-existing barns.
And so those, so that is a conference center. In your code, it's a conference center. Well, that's kind of a one-size-fits-a-gigantic thing. And is there, should Jimmy Swinmore and people like him with a barn his size and access his type have to go through the same gauntlet as a Marriott Ranch?
No.
And so that's the sort of thing you're kind of talking about, trying to match the constraints and requirements to the potential. And is there a way to do that for both structures and just open uses that might pop up in the field?
The other, the other part of this, I think, that we should look at, and it's been a season, so I'm acutely aware of revenue sources, is, you know, what are we charged for all of these permits and things that we allow? And is there opportunity, or are we at least covering the cost of doing business when we, when we issue these permits? So I just would ask that if we're, if we're gathering information from other counties to review, to see what's appropriate for us to try, that we also look at the costs involved in those things and adjust those accordingly as well.
And the recommended budget currently, boldly assumes that we're going to increase the building fees by 10% in some way to boost revenue by 10%.
I mean, I personally think we incur a lot of costs as a community to keep it rural and beautiful, and, you know, getting some public revenue from people who come and enjoy it is an absolute right way to get a return on that.
For sure, for sure.
But you hand out a special exception application, it's $900, and the people are joking. But there are four public hearings that possibly are going to happen if you, you know, go for, for advertisements.
We're covering our costs.
It's costing for exclusives.
So, I mean, $900, what's the cost of advertising? Is that separate?
So there's four advertisements, two per public hearing, and they're, they can be, depending on whether there's more than one in each one, it's like 200 bucks a shot, so it's like 800. Yeah, I mean, that's where 900 is not unreasonable, it's just, people look at it, I just handed somebody a fireworks application today, so it's $500. They're like, hmm, maybe I don't want to do that.
Well, I mean, there's, there's rationale for all of those events, and, and we, we probably need to increase them with the increased, noticing guidelines that we have.
We have to do something like a courthouse tax, like a faraway, you know, like five cents on all improvements in the county for courthouse taxes, maybe 10 cents, take the burden off the general podcast. So, so this is our direction, Gary?
Well, there's, I wrote a memo in April of 2020 and May of 2021, and maybe you're getting around to it now. I would recommend reading those memos to start, which I think are paraphrased too, or maybe copied from them. So I'm sorry, to the earlier question of what comp did this, did the supervisors come back to that more recently, or is this just coming?
We asked the supervisors in our little list of direction down here that's on every agenda, these ordinance amendments, we went back and said, okay, prioritize them.
I think it was the meeting before last, Mr. Henry asked that we.
It's still term money.
Yeah, priority from the board supervisors said that we could have clarity as we proceed with this work.
We kind of asked, you know.
Yes.
It's good, it's good.
Basically said, do you really want us to look at these things? And the board said, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the other aspect of this is the public safety component for events, which largely, if I recall correctly, is still with the public safety committee.
Yeah, I think that's just not going anywhere because of the concerns of, you know, catching the mom and pop stuff up with the potential, you know, impacting events.
Yeah, but we have the same problem.
Yep, well. Good thing you're the, good thing you're the planning side, you're the one that probably gets paid the good bucks.
That's right. All right, thank you, everybody, for your good humor. Does any, anyone have any other questions about this or materials that they'd like to see as we take these work orders? Thank you very much. All right, we've already heard from Mr. Stevens, that last agenda item fulfilled our direction from the board supervisors, roundtable discussion, does anyone have anything?
Yes. My husband has been recently named Director of Agricultural Development in Falkir County, and we have watched together quite a bit. And they are pulling their hair out, by they, I mean, the DEQ, PEC, Land Trust Virginia, and his department about a side farmer in the southern end of the county who's just been bringing in mega truckloads of fill. And what he claims is, is for farm use, he's going to level out his property, the dude's amassed millions of dollars now. Now he's got the money to play the county. He used to order by the judge to pay his neighbors $850,000, there was no skin off his back, but they're having a fit with that. I just wondered if we have some kind of protections that prevent farmers from, he's running commercial enterprise.
I mean, Falkir is not able to find legal support, file their.
They are having some serious issues.
A couple of years to the General Assembly to gain authority, have not been successful. This year, they had a bill in that would allow them to increase some of the fines and how quickly the fines could be applied for ENS violations, because it's considered agricultural fill, so there's some exemptions. It's, from talking to them, it's a drop in the bucket, it won't make that big of a change, but it's an incremental change. And the general discussion has been until this becomes a major issue for some other people, like our school funding issues, it's not going to gain traction in the General Assembly. Hurstway, the county did support Falkir County in the General Assembly this year because they're having issues now. So, it's a problem. And the agricultural exemptions to erosion and sediment control, you can drive a truck through them, literally, full of dirt, and.
It's quite, it's quite the area.
Fortunately, diesel is relatively expensive, and trucking far protects us. And as long as somebody can do it closer to their Northern Virginia construction site, we're going to be somewhat protected, but that's the only thing that protects us right now.
Is there a way to support them through our legislative platform?
If we have.
Anything else?
I've got a question about the town hall meetings that was for the comprehensive plan, are we still going on the 14th?
Yes. Do you have it scheduled? Do you have all of them scheduled?
Not yet. The first one I've scheduled, I will be reaching out to each of you to make sure that a certain date works so you can be at your district. The first one is scheduled for Monday, April 14th, at 6:00 PM at the Amistville Fire and Rescue. I think one of the questions that I think most people have is, one, is the whole line of commission planning on attending, or is it only a few members? And then how do we want to structure these meetings?
That's our regular April meeting?
No.
That's a week of your regular April.
It's the Monday, it's the week of the regular meeting.
I think if you don't have a, if you don't have a killer agenda, we go ahead and do a business meeting that night, too, so the people of Amistville can see how the planning commission works, enlighten them to how the county government functions. And we could do their public comment first and do the business afterwards.
I'll just send a gentle look and shout. I'll just send a gentle look, Michelle. If I recall, there might be some juicy stuff we can do.
We're gonna have a little hearing.
And some of them will not be in justice district.
Right.
If your regular meetings are advertised to happen here by your resolution, that changes, there's some... Jump in.
So, and it doesn't have to be everyone, I mean, I...
It should be everyone.
Yes.
It won't be everyone.
I mean, I think we all have lives, I don't, I don't expect...
I do want to be the 14th.
Yeah. That's what's crazy, you definitely don't have a life to finish your year.
The 14th, I think you set it down, you have the 14th.
So what, what if you all live in the past? Cause I, I...
Everyone, everyone.
But I wouldn't like to go to everyone. I would, I would, otherwise I would be everyone's life.
It doesn't look good if you got very poor board member turnout. It looks like people don't care about that district. So you want to get as many to each district as possible.
Well, I, knowing this commission, I feel confident that if people can attend, they will.
And that's the way it should be.
Yeah, I feel confident that they will.
So these have to be announced as a special meeting then?
It'll be, they'll have to be everything, yeah.
Yeah.
If three or more members are there, it's a, it's a meeting.
Right.
Now, you wouldn't have a quorum to do business. If you didn't have a quorum, you couldn't take action. But if there's three or more, you have to tell the world the time, date, place.
So are we gonna just show up? You know, whoever shows up there and just let people come in and talk or, you know...
Don't you think maybe you have just an outline of what the comprehensive plan does so they can at least direct the comments to that?
I think it's important, like, I guess you gotta advertise this in the wrap hand news or you're gonna put it on a website. I think it's important the way you do it, you're gonna say a public hearing is the purpose plan to address things like education, environment, zoning, to update the comprehensive plan, blah, blah, blah. Just open up the range of topics that is, is in the comprehensive plan that may stimulate someone's mind to come in and say what's, you're thinking about or a suggestion.
Okay, and then just have people, folks come in and watch.
Yeah, yeah.
Six o'clock, kids, open it up and let people get up and stand up and speak.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not sure of that. I mean, that's gonna be a pretty weird meeting. There's no agenda and nobody leading it or running it or whatever. I don't think it...
15 is gonna be weird.
Well, that's what you're implying, but I think we ought to...
It's not a business meeting. We're not there to make decisions. We're not there to transact business. We're there to take input from the public.
It's no different than somebody getting up here and doing public comments.
Now, I do...
But there is a difference because she sits here and says, do the pledge of allegiance and stand up and public comment is open. Well, no, I'm just saying, you have a rule. You don't just have everybody show up in a room and hope to spontaneously talk to each other. There's gotta be some organization.
That's what's happened before.
I can call the meeting to order and thank everyone for coming and explain why we're there. And then they, I appreciate they take time out of their busy schedule that this is really a critical building block for our county and we look forward to the opportunity for input as, as frequently as we can as they work through the comprehensive plan this year.
They went very well before.
Well, we also had zoning, we had, I believe we had the zoning administrator act on who...
Or someone will be there.
She'll be there.
Who sent it, threw a prompt out, who wants things to change? Who wants them to stay the same?
And you say, go back where you came from and then...
Proposed spotlight.
So I, I think it'll be fine. I think it'll be very cordial and I do think, I know, I know having sat through a lot of public comment periods, and I know that you have felt this before, Mr. Atkins, that if it's a simple question that we can't answer, we should try to answer it quickly for people like we did tonight so they don't sit around all night and wonder what the answer to their question is or have to wait for a two sentence email three weeks later. But we should mostly take input and, and enjoy the experience.
I think Gary mentioned about getting bogged down. I think you really don't want to get into a question and answer heavily. It's about hearing potential input for the comprehensive plan. It's, it's citizen input. It's not them necessarily to have a grievance that we go back and forth on and things like that. And as I recall, I think Amistville was the most outspoken, biggest turnout of, of the last tour back when we did that. They, they turned out.
Good.
Yeah. So you're taking the biggest one first.
That's fine. And, you know, I'll take it the same way I have taken, you know, sit downs with groups as supervisor. It's not, it's not stump your supervisor. It's not stump the commission or put the commission on the spot. It's a, it's a chance for interaction in, in your own backyard, which is great.
It's, it needs to be presented as a planning process for the next decade of wrap hand again.
For a five, a five year review.
Great.
I think, I think we all understand the mission. I think one of my first meetings, he said, we'll be singing from the same hymnal in no time. Mr. Henry, right?
Did I say that?
I think you did. Or no, maybe he said, start by humming along and we'll all be singing together in their time. I think that's what he said.
That was in 2018.
All right, any further concerns? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Move for adjourn.
All right, thank you, motion in a second. All in favor to say aye?